Okay, we're safe, we got the final motion.
Any board that's too many.
That was we're gonna get through the meeting.
It's not manageable when it gets very busy.
Any meeting, any group.
It is, yeah.
Bear with us, we're missing one member, so we're gonna wait a few more minutes before we start.
He's probably out campaigning.
Wouldn't surprise me. Yeah, I had a successful day, I went to the candidates forum and I end up I stole three pins.
Yeah. Where were you Steve, we missed you.
I don't even, it must have been the day that I had something already planned.
It was a Saturday morning at 10:00 AM.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
In one cold building.
Yeah.
Was it a cold building?
It was chilly, yeah, that day. At the guard home. But it was actually better attended than it was last year. Last year, I think it was just the candidates and the people from like the Mariner, that was it. And maybe the people running the video camera, whatever, I'm not sure, from cable access.
We're doing some things in the neighborhood of the Mariner today.
Yeah, yeah, I thought so too.
You really got a feeling for the people, what they said about themselves.
Hey Bill.
I certainly.
Did you guys already look at this cell tower?
Of the, I mean, there's all the.
No, I haven't.
I mean, did it come before the planning board?
No, it doesn't, it goes to ZB.
So does it come to the planning board at all?
Yeah, I already voted for it. Well, I'm gonna be gone, I'm leaving Saturday afternoon after our site visit, and I won't be back till Tuesday late.
We get involved with this one.
Well, yeah, that's right.
This one, we saw that they paid dearly.
This one out here.
Ready, cable ready? You ready, boss? Laura, you ready? Okay. Board's ready?
Ready.
Let's do it. Call ourselves the board, this is the meeting of the Situate Planning Board, April 25th, 2013. I need a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a public hearing, accessory dwelling special permit for Seven Pennycrest Road. The applicants are the O'Briens. You must be an O'Brien.
I am, John O'Brien.
Okay, why don't you sit at the long table with the uncomfortable chairs.
Sure. Why not?
Introduce your team, and then tell us what you'd like to do.
This is Ed Walsh, who's my contractor.
Hello.
John Appria is the architect.
Hi, John, good to see you again. It's been, what, about 15 years?
God, probably, yeah.
God, I still have that little model you made of my house. I'm still enjoying it.
And we're looking to add an accessory dwelling at Seven Pennycrest. The purpose for the accessory dwelling is to function as, primarily as an in-law apartment. My mother-in-law currently resides in the house with our family. My father-in-law passed away in September of last year, so the best choice for our family was to bring, was to bring Mary Ann in with us, so that's what the function will be.
Why don't you tell us what you're gonna do, put either the footprint, number of bedrooms?
Okay, the footprint of the space, I believe, is, you know, square footage? Yeah.
The footprint really doesn't change other than a small addition to the front of the house for a foyer, so I would say, you know, I don't know if we have calculations for the actual footprint on here, but the, you know, it's about a eight-foot by eight-foot area that we're adding to the front, and that's just for sort of a little entry area, and that can't be in front of that, and the rest of it stays within the existing house.
Okay, so the number of bedrooms is gonna be unchanged?
Unchanged.
Stays the same.
Stays the same, yeah.
Footprint other than the foyer remains unchanged?
Correct.
And about how big is, what are you gonna do, goes over the garage?
Correct, about a 22 by 22-foot garage with a pie-shaped area that's about 15 by 8 or so, and probably about 650 feet.
Yes, 650 or something?
Do you guys have the plans at all, or not?
Yeah, we did, we got them electronically sent out.
Technology.
Unfortunately, I did review them.
It seems to be a pretty straightforward application, it's a small accessory dwelling, it's, I think I saw the number 688.
Yeah.
With the, with the front, yeah, lots of 88.
Yeah, so it's less than the 750, and the house is, you know, within the 2,000, 2,500-ish range.
Little bit bigger, um, yeah, about 2,800 square foot.
So it's clearly subsidiary to the house in size, it's mostly using existing space that's already constructed above a garage, so, you know, and the number of bedrooms, I believe, stays at five.
Correct.
So there really were no, no big issues, I saw.
Questions from board?
There was one in the notes that Laura sent out, you just mentioned about the idea of potentially where a car would park if they did sell the unit, eventually, or something, or why?
Thank you for reminding me of that.
Okay, so, yeah, I just wanted to, what was that point, basically?
Well, that point was with the driveway going under, that if the house, you know, at some point in the future, we're gonna be sold in that unit, we're gonna be, you know, could be really rented to anyone, it's not restricted to a family member, that you might wanna show on a site plan some parking, just to have the potential to construct it at some later point if you had it, you know, ever rented to a person that was not related to you that wanted to come and go.
Yeah, we actually, actually, there's that, there's an existing space at the end of the driveway, so if you pull straight down the driveway, there's a space where the driveway extends slightly past the house on the right-hand side, and then there's plenty of space on the left-hand side for two cars to pull under the dri, pull into the garage, so there should be existing space to do that. Right, I just, yeah. Yep.
Yeah, so, that was the only thought that I had.
That was my only, otherwise I thought it looked really good.
You're good.
Well?
Good.
Eric?
Fine.
Stephen?
I think it looks great.
I think it looks fantastic.
Yeah.
Okay, now that can ask my only question, what software did you use?
Software for, yeah, okay. About 2010?
All right.
All right, well then you.
Well, that was the wrong answer, but you're still.
No, there are, no, there are no wrong answers.
I'm sorry.
I still work for Autodesk, so.
Okay, questions from the public, comments from the public?
I'm Republic, Anne Brevine, Ten Pennycrest Road.
Immediate of butter?
I'm across the street. And I've been in the neighborhood for a long time, almost 30, 30 years, and they're lovely people, and it will not attract in any way, shape, or form from the neighborhood, and I am in full support of it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're down to the motion, man.
Okay, we'll see.
I thought that was item seven.
Have lived.
On the way?
Item seven on?
Yeah, it is.
Oh, okay, okay, good.
You're thinking ahead. Okay. I move to make the following findings a fact. Number one, according to the town of Situate assessor's records, the property at Seven Pennycrest Road is owned by Sean J. and Melissa M. O'Brien. Number two, on March 20th, 2013, Sean and Melissa O'Brien applied for a special permit for an accessory dwelling within the existing single-family dwelling at Seven Pennycrest Road. Number three, according to the assessor's, assessor's records, the floor area of the primary dwelling is approximately 3,000 square feet, the floor area of the accessory dwelling, as shown on the plan, is 688 square feet. This is less than the 500, 7, 750 square feet, and meets the requirements of 530.2F for accessory dwellings. Number four, the property is located in the residential R2 zoning district, the lot area is 20,993 square feet. The existing footprint of the home is proposed to be unchanged as the existing dwelling will be reconfigured for one bedroom in the accessory dwelling, and four in the primary dwelling. There are presently five bedrooms in the existing house. Number five, the site plan shows a driveway and a two-car garage for the primary dwelling, this appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the accessory dwelling and ample parking for the primary dwelling. Should the accessory dwelling not be occupied by a family, a family member, additional parking may be required. Number six, the applicant has submitted a signed, notarized statement that he will live on the property. Number seven, the applicant should provide a site plan showing where additional parking would be located in the event someone does purchase the property who will not have a family member in the apartment. Number eight, this special permit shall be void if it is not recorded at the registry of deeds within 90 days of the date of filing with the town clerk, the owner shall provide proof of this recording to the planning board. Number nine, this special permit shall lapse within two years from the date of issuance unless substantial use or construction has commenced prior to that time in accordance with MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9. Number 10, the planning board reserves the right to review compliance with this special permit at any time, this special permit shall terminate if the use is not in accordance with this decision and its conditions. Number 11, at the request of the planning board, an affidavit shall be provided that either the primary or accessory unit is owner-occupied. And number 12, at each transfer of ownership of the property, a new affidavit that the owner resides on the property shall be provided to the planning board within 30 days of the transfer.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
It's three pages.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hang on a minute, hang on a minute, I think we, you might have missed a page.
Yeah.
It's too late.
And then decision.
Yes, okay, I think.
I apologize.
You just read by, kind of inserting that after.
Okay, I, yeah, I'm sorry, I move to amend the motion to add number seven, the applicant meets the standards of the Situate zoning bylaw, Section 530, for an accessory dwelling special permit. And you want me to do a second one?
Well, yeah, just, I think you.
So we voted on that amendment.
To approve this accessory dwelling with conditions, but you wanna add these to all the conditions that you read before.
All right, well, do you wanna vote on the amendment to what I just did, 'cause that was the final one, number seven.
On the findings?
That's the final, yeah, it's always easy to vote.
Yeah.
So move that, finding is, finding is a fact, I have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, you know what, I see what just happened here.
It was number seven.
Yeah, exactly, this was the finding a fact, and then this was the decision, which started six, and then, so I read half of the decision. Oops. Okay, so.
So you're gonna supplement what you read on the decisions, by reading the rest?
Okay, I move to approve the accessory dwelling special permit for Seven Pennycrest Road with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall meet all requirements of the Building Department, Board of Health, Department of Public Works, the Fire Department, Water Department, and other town agencies. Number two, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to plans entitled Cover-Demolition Plan Revised dated 3/26/13, Sheets A-1 through A-4, Basement Foundation Plan, First Floor Plan, Exterior Elevations, Interior Elevations, O'Brien Miller Residence, Seven Pennycrest Road, Situate, Massachusetts, prepared by Appria Design and dated February 11th, 2013. Submitted with this application. Site plan submitted for property shows septic system revisions dated March 11th, 1997 by Steinbeck and Taylor Incorporated. Number three, the property at Seven Pennycrest Road shall contain a maximum of two dwelling units, the existing dwelling and the accessory dwelling as proposed, the footprint, the number of bedrooms, and/or the square footage shall not be increased without prior approval of the planning board. Number four, the owner of the property shall reside on the property as long as it contains an accessory dwelling unit. Number five, the planning board will require an onsite inspection for conformance to the approved plans and these conditions prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued for the accessory dwelling. Number six, no on-street parking shall be permitted. I'll just keep reading this again, just so it's clear. Number seven, the applicant should provide a site plan showing where additional parking would be located in the event someone purchases the property who will not have a family member in the apartment. Number eight, this special permit shall be void if it is not recorded at the registry of deeds within 90 days of the date of filing with the town clerk, the owner shall provide proof of this recording to the planning board. Number nine, this special permit shall lapse within two years from the date of issuance unless substantial use or construction has commenced prior to that time in accordance with MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9. The planning board reserves the right to review compliance with this special permit at any time, this special permit shall terminate if the use is not in accordance with this decision and its conditions. Number 11, the request of the planning board, or at the request of the planning board, an affidavit shall be provided that either the primary or accessory unit is owner-occupied. And number 12, at each transfer of ownership of the property, a new affidavit that the owner resides on the property shall be provided to the planning board within 30 days of the transfer. And that is the decision.
Now do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now you got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
We'll, we'll file the decision in a couple of days, and then there's a 20-day appeal period, and I think they will not give you a building permit until that appeal period runs out.
I just wanna say thank you, this is the perfect use of the accessory dwelling, you know.
Good application.
Thank you.
Anne, you don't have to leave. Just kidding.
It's, the next item on the agenda is at 8 o'clock, so we can do, counting in minutes? We have minutes, right?
I think there are two, I saw that.
Two weeks.
March 28th and April 18th.
I move that we approve the Situate Planning Board minutes of March 28th, 2013, and also the Situate Planning Board minutes of April 18th, 2013. Second?
Second. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
If we read slower, 'cause we have 10 minutes, go real slow. Go real slow? But I gotta sign, I can sign real, sign real slow.
Yeah.
Today's the 25th, right?
25th.
25th.
Actually, while Richard is signing that, the planning board can sign the signature page with the special permit.
Can do that.
So those are the minutes?
So now we get bills?
No, no bills. We assemble them.
They're our only bill.
We're not, yeah, you're in trouble. You are in trouble. Liaison reports? The facility, master plan facility committee is meeting on the first, is that right Stephen, I think it's the first, 1st of May?
Wednesday, I thought it was a Tuesday.
Maybe, I thought, I thought the email that I got said there and said the 1st of May.
Oh, might be.
But anyway, at any rate, it'll be next week. And we're going to review the library, that's on the list. That's the only report I've got.
Is that the plan, to go building by building?
We've looked at them building by building, and then I think we bring them all together. Okay, I think we're, and we're still waiting for the, the report on the school and gates, see what that.
When is that due, do you think?
I thought some of it had already been given to the election.
Yeah, they, they done part of it, but I think it's, I wanna say it's like the end of June or July, end of June, maybe, I think that may be the timeframe.
There was some interim report, though, right?
Yes. That was, they looked at a couple of different alternatives within, excuse me, within Gates, so they selected a couple of them that they had further evaluated. How about the town plan report?
Okay, I got a bunch of things in more or less order of importance, 85 Maple Street, I don't know if Stephen was on the board when that came up, that's that parcel that was way back in the woods off of Maple Street.
Yes, that was cutting down.
We had the attorney.
The Brodsky letter.
And the Brodsky letter, representing the applicant, felt that there was, the wording of the stormwater bylaw really did not allow him to have to apply, well, you were there.
Yeah.
Have to apply for a permit. Well, some new things have happened over there, and the land now has this gravel all over it, and it must, I'm thinking it must have been compacted because there's one boat on it, but, you know, it's, it's hard to know what the intent is, although the owner does own a marina in Situate. So I'm wondering what you would say as far as considering this impervious surface, when I pass the pictures around, you'll see the size of the area and the kind of material. If it's impervious surface, then they do have to come into the planning board, if it's not, then they don't, but there are some zoning issues, they're probably gonna have to come in for a site plan review anyway, because they've done such a big alteration of the site, and any site alteration really has to come into the planning board for a site plan review. So anyhow, I just did want you to see it. It's, it's pretty dramatic.
Wow.
But it's also being reviewed by the Water Resource Committee, Ian Pillings, right?
Yeah, well, I think the Water Resource Committee, they can't really have the applicant come in and put any conditions on themselves, so they would be looking to.
Is it within the protection zone?
Yes, yeah, and they're worried, of course, about, you know, gasoline from, you know, from motors and any other material.
So, do you know what this is going to be used for, or you don't know, it's like parking boats, or?
That's what it looks like, but, you know, there's only one boat there, so.
Wow.
The gravel, Laura, is, it looks like it's got some ground asphalt as part of the composition?
Yeah, that's what Kevin Cafferty thought also.
That could be a serious issue in terms of runoff and pollution and that sort of thing, too.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, you know.
I guess, what, 'cause I understand it, to keep you honest, Water Resources is looking at it, Buildings is looking at it, but either one could refer it to us.
Well, Water Resources can't really refer it to you, really, I mean, it's under zoning.
All you've done is cleared it.
Sorry.
That was last time?
That was last time.
Yeah, the last conversation was just cleared it, right?
And now this material, you know, is down through the whole thing, and there's a ramp on one side, and.
Yeah, this looks like it's been leveled, compacted, and grained, yeah.
That's the natural material that, that is exposed on the site, this is clearly, and it looks like it's got a lot of asphalt, ground-up asphalt in it, and that's evidence to me of runoff.
The question before was whether it was impervious or pervious, and if it was impervious, then it really, you know, he, the attorney said himself that, that that was what, what the whole argument revolved around, and if it was impervious, then it should come to the planning board for review under the stormwater bylaw.
Because clearly before, as a forest floor, literal, it was pervious.
Certainly changed the permeability by doing this, right?
Right, and also the characteristics and speed of the runoff, any runoff of that area, you know, it's not sinking in as much, I mean, even, what's the line of, line between pervious and impervious, I guess I would be more comfortable with deciding that it's increased or decreased the permeability of that area of the site. I mean, it may not be totally impervious, but it certainly decreased the permeability by a lot.
As I remember, that was the issue that night, is whether or not it became impermeable, like waterproof, on one hand, or whether it still had some permeability at all.
Yeah, well, in any case, it will probably come to the planning board for a site plan review.
This looks like runoff problems.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna be the down-slope neighbor.
Can you refresh, I thought at that, that meeting, it was talked about being just a field, like it was going to be like a natural field, but maybe I'm wrong, do you remember what?
No, that was.
No, no, we were talking about playing there, and, you know, ball, and.
Yeah, play volleyball there.
Gee, do you think that was disingenuous, or?
I think we were gonna fib too.
I'm just wondering if I remembered hearing it wrong.
No, you absolutely remembered hearing that.
No, our discussion was specifically about, you know, the permeability with trees versus no trees, and that you weren't gonna alter the surface at all. Yeah, that's what I thought. It was very specific, and we had conversations, I know, about, you know, it does change the characteristics when you remove the trees, and the soil can get eroded easier, and, I mean.
Looks like there's some runoff problems on there, too.
Your last, your last picture.
Yeah, I think this is a, certainly, in my view, an impervious type of, in the spirit of the law, a lot more than, you know, we were talking about the spirit of the law last time, about the difference between just taking the trees down, and we were arguing that might. Yeah. Meet the spirit and letter of the law that they need to come before us.
Right.
So this certainly, you know, that could be a commercial lot somewhere.
Yeah. I mean, if you look at the size of it, I suspect that boat's probably 18 feet.
Yeah, it's a pretty big area.
I mean, so.
I think it's about.
Certainly not a residential type.
So that's an 18-foot boat, that's a pretty good sized area.
Yeah.
As I recall, that's kinda down the slope off Maple Street, and it's kinda back around the corner, and you don't necessarily see that as you go driving down the road.
You don't.
Yeah.
It's really far back in there.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
Yeah.
Well, and I would think that also.
There's some tributaries, though, I think that's the other piece, right?
Water could pool pretty easily somewhere on there.
So, do you think, then, that it's a good idea for me to send him another letter about the stormwater bylaw?
I would think so.
Yeah, I would think so.
Okay, is that sort of a majority of you thinking that?
Yes, I agree.
Yeah.
We did last time, just for cutting trees. I know.
So, is this letter you're gonna send in, is this basically an invitation to come in and speak with us?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm ready to hear the mea culpa.
Okay.
I suspect you won't.
Okay, yeah, it, he may, it may make sense for him to come in for the site plan and the stormwater altogether, but he's gonna get a letter about the site plan either from us or from building, probably from building, but what's happening now is I'm actually writing some of the letters, and, you know, they're putting the signature on, which is good, because it just all dovetails.
I think I would send him an individual letter on this one, 'cause this, this was the conversation we had, right?
Yeah, yeah, good, okay.
Send him the same letter you sent last time, but I think we wound up withdrawing, send him the same one.
Something, something.
Come talk to us.
Yeah, that's right.
It was a really gently worded invitation about, you know, there may be something going on out there that the planning board wants to talk to you about in terms of the stormwater bylaw.
What else do we have?
Okay, the other things I.
You could be more direct this time.
Yeah.
Just along the same vein, Bill, and John Clarkson, and I, and various other people have had some discussion about the water resource bylaw, the Water Resource Protection District bylaw, and we're gonna be looking at how to best work that into the town's bylaws, whether it should be zoning, or part zoning and part something else, or all something else, and that is moving along, and probably gonna come to town meeting, maybe in the fall, I think, so there's that.
Do we have a time limit for adopting that, before the state?
The water withdrawal permit expires in August of 2014.
14, okay.
We should kinda get moving, in the fall would be, would be a good time to do it, we could do it in the spring, but, you know, why wait? The other things I was gonna mention are, I went to the Economic Development Committee meeting last night, we're just about to sign the contract for the D L T A, the. We're just about to sign the contract for the D L T A, the market study grant. We worked that a little bit with M A P C. It really looks like they're going to get some good products out of it, so that's good.
Yeah.
And the other thing is that we are also just starting the open space plan. We're doing an open space plan update. So it's kind of busy lately, but it's good.
It's progress.
I know, just wanted maybe if it makes sense now or later on, since she just gave her a report. But I read the meeting minutes last time and I apologize I wasn't able to join. But I know you discussed, and I discussed this briefly with you, about the, looking at the overlay business district in Green Bush and maybe modifying that. Is that something that the board, we can discuss at a future day?
On or about the night of May?
On or about the night, is it already on the agenda?
It will be.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make that comment.
So it's eight o'clock, right? So let me go into a public hearing. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for flexible open space special permit definitive subdivision plan on three oh five Countryway. We have the applicant.
Can anybody sign in if you haven't signed in?
Have we received a letter from the applicant?
No, they're still within the timeframes, but we were expecting them to come. Yeah, we, I exchanged some email with Greg Morris today because he had asked about, you know, whether or not he could, you know, talk about the plan without having John Chessy's comments yet. And I did get back to him after we exchanged some email. I never heard anything about, oh, I'm not going to come to the meeting.
So is it in our purview to continue until the twenty? What would they do?
Bless you.
It's all that, all that golf.
Oh, yeah, no, it's all that pollen, is what it is. My time of year.
I'm living Claritin clear right now.
Good for you, that makes one of us.
I don't think it's good to have a discussion between you and your drugs and cable TV.
Oh, Claritin, I think it's okay. I'm going to get some free product in the mail.
Yeah, I'm looking for full springs.
Over the counter these days.
So it's, we've got, within the timeframe, we can continue it?
Yeah, you can continue it. You opened the hearing before May fourth, which is now. So, I mean, I think you, what you're going to do is officially open the hearing and then continue it.
So I need a motion to acknowledge that we've opened the meeting and we will continue to.
To May twenty-third.
Twenty-third or fifth?
Yeah, May twenty-third at seven thirty, yeah. So we have a, okay, this is what, we were going to get the applicant to sign, but they're not here. So we have a motion if someone would like to.
Oh, sure. I was going to say, that's funny, I go, maybe they're out with Fred. Because the road's named Fred's Way.
Ah.
I move to accept the applicant's request to, to continue, it's not really continuing, though. I move, yeah. I move to continue the public's hearing, hearing for the definitive subdivision plan and flexible open space special permit for Fred's Way at three oh five Countryway until May twenty-third at seven thirty P M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion being done, all those in favor?
Aye.
That takes share of that. There's been a proliferation of emails that have gone back and forth. You don't have to leave, Steve. But there's been a proliferation of emails that have gone back and forth on it, so. I don't know if you've kept up with all of them.
I'm sorry?
I said the proliferation of emails that have been going back regarding the tributaries and the setbacks and everything, I don't know if you've followed all of them.
I tried, there was a lot.
Yes.
Yeah, me too.
The main thing I remember her saying was that it probably would be, like, not withdrawn, but we wouldn't be discussing a lot of this evening, so I was like, okay.
And the thing, the other piece that came up that I wasn't aware of is the fact that I guess the suit against or the question that was raised against the wetlands flagging has been withdrawn. So that no longer is an issue. I must have missed that.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, I think the email was, some of it was like saved as messages and that should have been in everything that you all got, but.
Oh, really?
I think it wasn't in the heading, it might have been a couple of emails.
Yeah, there was one email that had like six attachments and those six attachments were other email threads.
Yeah.
There's a couple of things it couldn't open, so maybe that's it. Okay.
I think people may not have realized that the hearings are going to take place.
If you're here for the three oh five Countryway hearing?
Yes.
We just continued that.
Both parts?
The flexible and the definitive have both been continued until May twenty-fifth, twenty-third.
May twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Are we going to get another registered letter in the mail?
You should not get another, another letter in the mail. Right, this is your, this is your notification.
So both parts, so both hearings then?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we've got a couple of minutes before the next meeting, the next hearing. We're back to, anything else, Laura?
We did get a notice about the chapter ninety-one hearing for dredging in the South River. I think I sent something around a couple of weeks ago. The town of Marshfield is using sediment from the South River to replenish Rexham Beach. And a little bit of that sediment is on the Situate side and Tricia and the selectmen know about that. And there doesn't seem to be any issue that they have with it. So, you know, hopefully if we ever need their sand from the bottom of the river, we can get it back.
And anything on the cell tower?
Yeah, there's, there's a cell, thank you, yeah, there's a cell tower application for three sixty-one Tilden Road. This was the same location where a cell tower was proposed, oh, maybe a year ago. And it used to be that the town had more say with these. We had a district set up for where cell towers could go and they couldn't go anywhere else. But now that the system is getting built out, they can pretty much go wherever the cell tower companies think that they need them. So the zoning board will hear it, they pretty much have to approve it. The towns that haven't approved it have gotten overturned when they've gone to court, so.
But what's the controlling law on that?
It's case law.
It's a federal law.
It's a federal law or a private?
Yeah, it comes out like a use variance, even though towns don't have use variances, they have to still kind of get these. So they actually have done a few things to try to make it more acceptable. They've made it like the tree design with a little pushy.
Leaves and things sticking out of it.
Oh, yeah, that's a fine tree, all right.
Yeah, really, there's a giant redwood right there.
So they're going to do that, they're going to.
They're going to double take it sometimes.
You know, they're going to try to make it, you know, somewhat nicer than it would have been.
Yeah, this one on the Mass Pike.
Now, is it still considered what they call a monopole?
It's almost okay.
Yeah, it'd be a monopole. It won't be like this one back here, it'll be just one pole with these little.
Coming east on the Mass Pike Richard and about Natick, I want to say, there's one on the right. And it's, it's interesting, it does stick up above the rest of the trees, but, you know, it's got these leaf branch things. If you look, if you're going seventy miles an hour, it does, yeah.
I haven't noticed it, so I guess that's a good thing.
Yeah, it's, huh. Now, there's, there's all kinds of language about radiation, not radiation, but some levels of radioactivity surrounding it have to meet federal standards and all of this. Do we get to see any of that backup material that, that, you know, says at the property line, this is going, the level to be anticipated, that kind of thing?
I think it's the Board of Health that gets that.
Okay.
But they should get it, so.
So that's all got to pass muster before this can go forward.
Yeah.
But they've asked for comments from the planning board. Will anything we say have any material effect on the outcome?
I think possibly, I mean, they'd rather avoid lawsuits and hassles of various kinds. So if there's something that you think could be done to it to improve it, I mean, given that it pretty much has to be there and it pretty much has to be that height, the town was trying to.
Is there a study that shows it has to be there?
Well, it doesn't have to be just in that one site, but in that general, excuse me, general area. And.
But there's, there's data that, that there's some kind of analysis that demonstrates that that general area needs it, so.
Oh, yeah.
I can tell you, yeah.
Just drive your car down there and you lose reception, yeah?
You could do that almost anywhere in Situate.
Yeah. So you might be seeing more of these.
I think it's worse there than, than a lot of other places.
Is this that corner lot on Irving and, and I guess it's.
It's on Tilden.
Tilden, where they're, they're, you're cutting all those trees?
Tilden and Egypt Beach Road, sort of, the two boundaries.
But this is, this is on Tilden, on the west side of Tilden. It's.
It's back, there's a lot there.
It's a back lot.
Yeah.
It's not front.
It's not too far from the intersection with Aunt Vinyl.
Okay. Oh, okay, yeah.
Right, I need, I need your proof. But it is surrounded by residences, there's no question about that. You know, it's a tightly, tightly settled area.
Brings us to eight fifteen.
Perfect timing.
Next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver for three Millworf Plaza unit N eleven.
This whole, there's housing.
The applicant is N eleven Realty LLC.
Not quite right there, like right there.
Good evening, why don't you introduce yourself and your team, tell us what you're looking to do.
Good evening, good evening, thank you for hearing us tonight. I'm Attorney Stephen Gard for the applicant, with me is the owner. The manager of the LLC that owns the entity is Bryce Greffey. And with us is John Appiah, our architect, as well as the other two owners behind me, Jennifer and Sarah Jensen.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry. I'm on the Board of Trustees for this condo association, so I'm.
Recuse yourself?
Going to recuse myself in this step.
Okay, so then that means that the rest of us will be voting on it.
Yep.
Sorry for the interruption.
No problem. So Jennifer and Sarah Jensen are also owners of the LLC that owns the entity. They're also pertinent in the, they're going to be running the establishment called Be Well Studios. So before you this evening is a request for a site plan waiver for some relatively minor interior renovations that the applicant is doing in the space at three Millworf Plaza unit N eleven, or commonly known as SpaScapes previously. If you flip to the package that you have, you will see that the first page of the plans entitled D one are the demolition plans. The dashed lines represent the interior walls that are being removed. As you can see, that space was divided up quite significantly for the SpaScap business. The second page, A one, which is the building plans that show the darker lines, those are the new walls being established. You can see that very little new construction is being done with respect to the finished space. The top left corner, you'll see that there is, there is to be a fitness studio. Bottom left corner is to be a yoga studio. And then there will be several therapy rooms along the lower, or the, I think that's the southern wall? The northern wall of the unit, and then the reception area. Now, of significance is the A two page, the next page over. You can see the area that is marked with the small black dots or the kind of shaded area. Those black dots, they represent the new ceilings being installed. So the new ceilings are being installed above both studios and the reception area in the back. The reason that I point that out to you, as well as over the, over the bathrooms as well, the reason that I point that out to you is that because while the request for the site plan waiver is for minor interior renovations of the premises, it has been brought to our attention that some concerns with respect to noise emanating from the unit itself. So it has always been the applicant's plan to mitigate the noise in using, in the use of sound insulation. The applicant has, as I submitted a letter, a couple of letters that supplemented the application explaining some of the concerns that were brought up prior to tonight's hearing, has retained Anderson Insulation to perform sound insulation services during the construction of the build out. They are specifically being hired to install sound rated insulation as opposed to thermal rated insulation. There is, there are products that will be installed that will help or almost mitigate completely the sound, leaving the building at least through the ceiling, which is our intention. With respect to the sound, the condominium bylaws are very specific and they, and I submitted a copy of the section relevant to the sound issue or any use for that matter of the, any unit in the, in the Millworf Plaza residential or commercial in that any sound or any use cannot unreasonably interfere with the use of another person's unit. So with that in mind, the existing, if you picture, if you will, the existing subfloor of the unit above, the residential unit above, below that are twelve inch floor joists. Between them are twelve inch, is twelve inch regular thermal insulation. Then there is a sheet rock ceiling installed to the bottom of those floor joists. Then there is a void space between that piece of sheet rock and the ceilings that we are installing, which will also be of sheet rock and not drop ceilings. They will be full sheet rock ceilings. Between that layer of sheet rock and the sheet rock layer below at the bottom of the floor joists will be the sound insulation. Now, of further relevance to the sound issue mitigation is that SpaScapes had in its structure, built in sound system, like you have a home sound system where the speakers are in the ceiling. We will not be utilizing speakers in the ceiling or an installed home sound system or commercial sound system. We will be utilizing a desktop or cabinet top radio player, like a Bose wave radio. So there won't, which I think will also mitigate any kind of sound reverberation through the actual structures itself. The applicant has agreed with the condominium trustees and I believe it's the, the unit owner right above the premises to conduct a sound test prior to opening, so that they can determine a, an acceptable level of volume for the music being played in the, in the studios, acceptable to both the management company and the condo association, the unit owner and of course, the applicant. So the, this is not a, like a gym where the music's going to be blasting. This is a wellness studio where there will be massage therapy rooms where the music is obviously to be low and mild to relax people. And then, of course, there will be a yoga studio where the, in a fitness training where there is more like a one on two, one on four, one on five training going on where the music is not going to be roaring loud because the trainer has to communicate with the participants as well. So while there is certainly going to be background music, it is not the typical, you know, like hard rock type music that you would find in the typical free weight gym where the muscle heads are pumping iron. So the, as far as that goes, this, the other concern that came up before the meeting was the hours of operation and the outside noise. The applicant proposes to operate the business at, from five thirty in the morning till eight o'clock at night. Sunday's ten to three, but by appointment generally, so there isn't sort of the general public. In my letter, I, I pointed out that the morning hours are not, it's not typically where, like Bay State Athletics where people show up at five thirty, six o'clock and there's just droves of people going in and out before they go to work. This business is more of a, it's more personal. The people that will be there, the likelihood of the people being there will be between four, five, six, seven, maybe as much as ten. If they get ten people in there for a class in the morning, they would be completely elated. But in all likelihood, it's probably closer to five or six people who would be there in the beginning for that. Or individual appointments. I don't think too many people get massages at five thirty in the morning, but, you know, nonetheless, it would be an individual person coming in. As opposed to, you know, everybody, I've had physical therapy over at Bay State and you just, people just come across the parking lot like a sea at six o'clock in the morning. That's not the same business that this is, this is different. This is a new concept, not necessarily a new concept, but it is a more individualized concept of exercise, training and wellness. The, let me just look here. Certainly the applicant understands that. Certainly, the applicant understands that, that they are operating a business in a mixed-use district. In fact, Jennifer and Sarah have been running healing touch therapies for over ten years, I think, right down in the harbor. So the people that exist down in that area, they are their customers. The last thing that they intend to do is alienate those folks. They want to provide services for the type of therapy that they believe in to the surrounding community. And they ask you tonight for a site plan waiver to allow the interior renovations that we are expected to implement.
Okay, before, before we end it off to someone, explain to me where you are in relationship to the building. What's below you, either side, and above you?
That, so below us is just nothing.
Below us, we have the crawl space for the condominium complex. We have an eight-inch concrete slab on the, that our unit is built on. There are Noah butters to either the north or the south of us, and we have an butter, which is the, I think it's now called Everyday Girls, is in the purpose space, which if you look at our site plan, it would be all the way to, in the unit to the right of us. And then we have two residential units above us.
What? I think I'm, I'm not alone thinking that this is a really nice use to have. It's, it's a positive thing for people to, to get exercise and to have the kind of holistic approach that seems to be part of the way that they do it. So I think it's an understandable kind of thing to, to want to do as a business. I think that the noise has to be kind of like one of these Wisdom of Solomon types of situations for the planning board. And I would just, you know, these are just my own feelings about it, and I think it's, it's all somewhat subjective. But I did notice that the, is it the be fit for women, the, let's, let's be fit, get in shape for women.
Yep.
Thanks, that they start at, at six. And it seems to me in a mixed-use building, their, their building is also mixed-use, but they don't have as many units. I believe the, the owners of the building keep an apartment up above where the exercise studio is, and then there are two units that are rented out. And I think with rentals, it might be a little different feeling that people have living there, because they know they can always leave if, if it gets too disturbing. So I think that with the, the more mixed-use units, you know, residential units, you know, a bigger building, I mean, I would just think that it might not be really anything that you would, you know, really get that much benefit out of to have it open that extra half hour, but I know you're gonna, you know, want to have, you know, a lot of discussion about that, I'm sure. But, you know, just my suggestion would be maybe six o'clock is maybe a good time to have something start like this. You know, depending on what your, you know, what your expectations are. But I think the idea of being in a residential condominium and having people coming and going before six in the morning just seems, you know, again, it's very subjective. I'm not a, you know, real easygoing person when it comes to noise, so maybe people are gonna be.
You wouldn't want to live in the harbor then, huh?
Yeah. So that's, that's one thought that I had about this, and the other parts of it, I think, have been addressed well by the applicants. There is insulation that's being proposed in the, in the space between the ceiling and the subfloor above. There are some walls that are going to have some insulation also in, in the, the actual Be Well Studio. The use of the tabletop devices probably will control the sound to some extent, and certainly having some testing is a good thing, and being open to some input from the residents up above with, you know, what their sensitivity is to it. So those are just, you know, some thoughts on it.
Well, I think like Laura and I had discussed, we were somewhat concerned about the noise, but I think the letters that you sent recently certainly addressed most of those concerns, and the fact that there would be a walkthrough, and that this was the insulation, and this is exactly what was being done, and that there was quite a mitigation plan, it seemed like, and as you mentioned, the condominium documents. So I was very happy seeing that letter, and that really all the points that we, that had been brought up, I think, were discussed, so it was really good. So I'll leave it up to, I guess, other people to discuss the time, I think five thirty or six, probably. Five thirty is a little early, but.
It, it, you know, it's a business, though. The other question I had was, are you doing Zumba classes?
At this time, no.
Okay.
It's not really targeted towards quality of life necessarily?
Some more, again, are, are, what we want to do is work more at an individual level. Address each person's need, you know, what their personal fitness goals are, their wellness goals, so giving to Zumba is more of a, it's just a different realm.
Yeah, that's fine. The reason I ask that is I know, I've been to Zumba classes, they're loud, and, and that's why, you know, if it's more of the background music, I think it's what we were discussing, that it's really more background music to be exercising.
I'd like to point out, too, that the fitness and the yoga studios share a wall, and there's yoga and meditation going on in one studio and there's fitness in another. So, I mean, our first goal is to be good neighbors, and to practice good business, and to help people. So we don't want to disturb anyone else alone, our own clientele, you know what I mean? So we wouldn't have that sort of loud music or any sort of PA system going on, and we have all these other quiet therapies going on in our own space to disturb our own business, so.
Right. Is there a problem that there's an ice cream store on the other side of there? That seems to be a juxtaposition there. Go to the movie, go to ice cream, come get fit.
Sounds like job security to me.
Now, I guess this is a question maybe to Laura, do you know other business, is there any other business, what time does Sam's open?
Six.
Six? So this would be like the earliest place most likely.
You know, though, there are all those charter fishing boats just across the, literally across the street.
Right.
And they're, they're gonna be leaving at the, you know, way before the crack of dawn.
Maybe at three AM.
Yeah. I, I realize it's seasonal, but nevertheless, you know, that's also when the, the harbor businesses get their most traffic, is, is in the same season.
We didn't ask for five thirty arbitrarily. We would not, we recognize that other businesses typically open at six. We, Jennifer and Sarah polled their clientele, and there was a demand for five thirty. So we, there is a need, and for this business to be competitive and to thrive and be successful, they have determined that five thirty would be beneficial to allow that to take place. So it wasn't simply, oh, we just want to open up earlier than everybody else to get the people to us. As you can see from the description, this isn't a mass sort of swipe-your-card-go-in-and-hit-the-treadmill. It's a very individual personalized service that, and we are, we've, we've taken the concerns or requests of the clientele into account in a significant investment in the unit, so that's why we did five thirty. It wasn't simply arbitrary, just to throw it out there. While I understand that there is some concern, you know, the applicant is requesting that as the start time.
And I mean, I, I personally think that you've met a lot of the concerns that we had, and that, you know, the, I really appreciate that, like I said, the letter and the, the mitigation plans that you have, so I have no further questions.
I'm not concerned about the hours, it's more the noise and vibration. Are there going to be weight machines?
No.
No weight machines?
No, there aren't, but yeah.
Okay. And as far as noise, I mean, the sound insulation sounds great and everything, and you're not going to put any speakers in the ceiling at all, or anything at all like that?
In fact, we've removed most of the speakers.
They were there.
At this point, they were there, so.
And we did that on purpose. I mean, that was, you know, we, I just became aware that there were existing sound system there, but we made a conscious decision not to install one when they did the build-out, you know what I mean? So we're actually taking out the SpaScapes internal system, and then not replacing it and using just a simple tabletop device.
Okay, and there, there's no reason that you'd have to have the windows open, I guess, either during the?
Wouldn't imagine.
You know, I mean, because that would be the other way, the sound would escape.
Would escape, yeah.
During certain hour, I'm trying to think of, you know, conditions here, certain hours or something, certainly in the summer, you want to have the windows open at some point, but.
During reasonable hours.
But you know, if you're open at, at five thirty, despite the sound insulation, if you have the windows open, it's.
Right, and we, I mean, we, we want to be respectful neighbors, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
The building I live in now, I mean, we can hear, I mean, it is just massage therapy, so we're quiet, but you, there is no real disturbing noise from other neighbors, but you can hear them, but we wouldn't, I guess what I'm trying to say is it's important to us to be good neighbors and to be supported by the community, and support the community in return.
Right. And I, I guess, just to clarify, so what's in front of us? It's a, it's administrative?
Site plan waiver for approving the, the changes to the site, you know, the changes to the building.
Site plan waiver, so then it's, we can still condition, though?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and I can understand the five thirty. People like to work out before they go to work, and if they're going to go in and do that and still catch, you know, commuter rail or boat into Boston, you know, it's hard to squeeze all that in sometimes before, so I can understand that. So I think it's more if the noise and vibration are addressed, then nobody should care whether you open at four in the morning or not. I mean, there's activity in the harbor, but you have to make sure, you know, so I'm thinking about, you know, weight machines, despite, you know, your best intentions, you have weight machines, floors vibrate and stuff, they make noise.
Probably we won't have any machines.
Okay, and then the, you know, large group classes, you know, if it's yoga, you know, I'm not concerned, but if it's Zumba or something, you know, I, I don't really know how you define that in a condition, though.
Well, if the noise level is respected at all times, then we're not disturbing anybody in the units. And, and they'll be small group classes, not large. I mean, if we have ten people in a class, we will be elated, you know, but it's not.
I don't know, geez, I'm speaking right, Sarah's the personal trainer.
Well, mostly, you know, me personally, I've been training individuals for quite a few years now, and you want to be able to talk to the client and relay information, so make sure that they're keeping safe and doing things correctly in any kind of movement. So I don't want loud music. I want to be able to talk like this, so that we can clearly understand one another. So I'm not a yeller, you know, I don't have music up loud, because like, they're, they're there to condition the body, not to dance and listen to music. So that's basically my goal, you know, and I do have a large drop of that five thirty times left. Once I drop a client at that five thirty times left, somebody's right there to pick it up, so.
I guess. I'll say that the, I think it, to the board's advantage, is the condominium component to this, in that there are, there is a watchdog in the condominium trustees, and certainly the residents who are fellow unit owners that have a say in that, in the regulation that's already in place with respect to the noise, you know, for the condominium, in the condominium.
What does that say, do you know? I mean, maybe.
I submitted a, yeah, I submitted, oh, no, we can, we can go through it, but I submitted a copy of the section, it's no unit owner shall make, permit or suffer any disturbing noises or vibrations by means of a radio, et cetera, et cetera, musical instrument or other device, form of technology by himself, et cetera, et cetera, that will unreasonably interfere with the rights, comforts, or convenience of other unit owners or occupants. So, it, it, you know, and then it goes into an outside noise thing, which we don't.
Is there anything about vibration at all?
Yeah, it says, no, any disturbing noises or vibrations, right in the first line.
That satisfies me. I would incorporate directly what they have in the bylaw, maybe I'd suggest that as a condition of our approval, so we don't have two standards, but that's what I was thinking along the lines of no unreasonable noise or vibration versus, you know, trying to define windows open, shut, all the other things like that. If it's interfering with people, it's interfering with people, and.
Right.
One other comment about the vibration factor, again, I just want to point out that we're not using any, like, powered subwoofer or anything like that. It's the bass frequencies that are the most oriented towards causing vibration, and we're just not putting a sound system in that's capable of doing that type of, you know, massive types of low-frequency sounds.
Yeah, and certainly the, the soundproofing's going to be an improvement over what was there before, by significantly.
Absolutely, yes.
So that's helpful, and if, you know, we put something like, you know, no installed speakers on the ceiling, that's, that's most, my two cents worth, right?
Only two cents?
Yeah, that's it, maybe five cents.
Yeah, a couple of things. The five thirty opening concerns me a little bit. I mean, you're still going to have automobile traffic, no matter what happens. That'll probably be earlier than the automobile traffic that's typically on the site today. I'm wondering if the, if the acoustical assembly that you're going to put up on the ceiling is, is, has been designed? John, is it, you know, has, has an engineer looked at it? Does it have an NRC associated with it?
No, right now, it's basically what was there, because there's two ceilings. There's obviously drywall right to the bottom of the joists, and we're doing, as we're putting the insulation between there, just to buffer that more, but then there's a second ceiling framed out of two-by-sixes and another layer of five-eighths. So it's creating this assembly, but it wasn't something that was done.
Engineered necessarily, okay. And how's the, how's the final ceiling that I see when I look up hung? I mean, are those two-by-sixes spanning?
Well, actually, one of the things we had to do is put a whole bunch of structural elements in there to limit the spans of the ceiling, so there's a bunch of LBLs. I think the longest span might be twelve, fifteen feet, something like that.
Okay, but it's, it's all solid, it's all solidly put together, there's no resilient clips or anything.
We literally just got a structural engineer that came back, back and put in twenty-inch LBLs clipped to the floor with, you know, four-by-fours bolted down through the floor. So it's very, it's, it's more so suited for earthquake loads and all of those than anything else.
Or tidal waves. Okay. And you are going to propose a test at some point that the residents will.
We have, we have proposed the test. We've talked about the residents and the, with the trustees. We have agreed to do that as soon as what our sound insulation and our hard ceilings are in, so we have a real-life environment in which to test. The management company is also going to be involved in that.
Okay, and you've answered my next question. You have met with the trustees and discussed this issue.
Have they provided any formal comment?
Yeah, that's, that was my next question.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. You're the chairman.
Alice Brown is here. Could I ask her to comment to that?
Yes, we met with Bryce.
Alice, why don't you tell, tell us who you are?
Oh, because you don't know me. Alice Brown, trustee at Situate Harbor. We met with Bryce and reviewed his plans, Rich Mospatelli from Harbor Management was also there, and we discussed at length with them the noise, the hours of operation. There's traffic in Situate Harbor starting at four o'clock when the trash trucks come, when the fishing boats go out, when people go to Dunkin' Donuts. Sam's opens at six. There aren't a lot of people there. Those trucks are probably going to make more noise than six women going to yoga. Typically, you don't have a donut and then go to yoga. What we sign every two or three.
That's where I fail. I always get the donut part.
God, I wish I knew that.
We are concerned about the noise. Linda, who's here, who lives directly above them, has asked for the sound test. And then Wendy Williams, who also wrote a letter and submitted it to the board. I spoke with her this afternoon and asked her if she wanted us to test her unit as well, and she does. So we'll be doing tests in both units. There is another unit that's over it. Right now, that unit is empty, the gentleman passed away, so there is no, nobody that we would be doing the test for there. So two out of the three units that are affected will be doing the test in. And without having the speakers in the ceiling, which they've removed, and just using the bows, I don't think anybody's going to hear any noise. I think that they will notify their people if they can park. If you go into one of these classes, unless you're, like, something's physically wrong with you, which is also the people you treat, you don't mind parking behind CVS and just walking over. There is the center part of the parking lot, you can ask someone to park closer to Millwarp Restaurant, where nobody's there, and they've agreed to do those types of things. And the only other thing that I discussed with Wendy Williams and then with Linda tonight, the closers on the front doors. When you close those doors, they make a lot of noise, so I was just going to talk about adding a soft close to that. You can certainly tell the ladies, don't slam the door, but on our condo entrance side, we have an issue where when the paper boy comes, pretty much everybody can hear him in the building, because our closer on our side doesn't work, and we haven't effectively fixed it yet for the residences, but we would ask you to do that, so it's a soft close. And if you can't hear the door ringing, that was one of Wendy's concerns. And then just asking people not to park as close as they can to the front door, but further away behind CVS or closer to Millwarp, because by the time they're out of a class, no one's going to Millwarp Restaurant until eleven AM, so. I, I think those are my issues, and the only other thing that we had discussed in our board meeting was, there wouldn't be Zumba classes. I've been to a couple. I've been to a couple of those, and those are loud, and I, you had said then there would be none, so that would be, as long as they adhere to our bylaws and no Zumba, and fix the door closer, and we satisfy the tests with the noise, then that was all the board had. And other than that, we think it's a great thing for them, and it's not that much different than what Spascape was, other than the hours would be extended, and we had no issues with it.
How do you determine what's an acceptable level of noise?
If Linda can hear music in her unit, then it is not acceptable, so it should be contained within the unit. So if we go up to Linda's unit and she can sing along with the song, then it's really not gonna work for us, so.
Tapping your toe or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, and she really shouldn't hear it at all, and I don't believe you're going to, because at yoga, you can hardly hear the music. I mean, I am kind of deaf, but.
What type?
Linda will tell us that, and the Williamses will tell us that, and if they can hear it, then it's too loud, but I don't think for what they're doing, I think the trash truck will make more noise than their music, so.
So you're saying that deliveries in the harbor are coming in at the five thirty timeframe?
Dunkin' Donuts gets deliveries, and then the trash trucks, the street sweeper starts, 'cause I walk at four thirty in the morning, so I see who's in the harbor then, and it's people at Dunk starting at five, and then trash trucks and delivery trucks, of which you probably hear a lot of those. Yeah. Oh, and you guys do too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, is that it?
Yeah, no, that's very good.
Eric?
I'm sorry, your name was Linda, did I hear that right?
Yes, Linda.
Yeah. When Spascape was there, were, was their sound system disturbing to you?
No.
Okay.
They, they, they primarily, you know, the day spa where they did facial body treatments, waxing, that kind of thing, pedicures man, at the time, so it was a very.
I, I, I visited the business when it was still operating there, and it seemed pretty quiet, and if they, if the sound system that's being presented is even more quiet than that one was, I don't think it'd be a problem. I'm in that parking lot almost every morning, and sometimes as early as five, I'm gathering my papers before I go off to where I need to be, and it, and it can be, it can be busy.
My bedroom and living room, and living room dining room is all over the, it's situated above the exercise room. And at five thirty in the morning, I really don't wanna hear any, anything.
Well, I can understand.
So that's my, my primary concern, I wanna have, and Sarah and I spoke about it, we just wanna have just another day where I don't hear them, they don't hear me, and we're all happy.
I have to also mention, I've visited Healing Touch a time or two, and I walked in there, and I'm kind of loud by nature, and I was certain that someone was gonna come around like a librarian in the library and tell me to be quiet. So I, I, I think, I think they run a pretty peaceful operation, so I'm, I'm pleased with what I've heard.
Any other comments from the public?
Sir, my name is Christine, but I'm an attorney, I'm not a resident of Citewood, I'm embarrassed to say, I live in Cambridge.
I know, I know a good real estate agent if you'd like to buy a place.
I, I represent Miss McMenus, and may I, may I address the board?
Sure.
Thank you. I think that what she's just expressed to you herself is her primary concern, she just doesn't wanna hear anything when she's in her unit, and that's the situation that she has right now. She is not in any way opposed to this business, everyone has been lovely to her, and she wants nothing but for this business to prosper and it be a, become a useful part of the neighborhood. The problem is that there is a potential here for this business to be so successful that it interferes with her quiet enjoyment of her property, and therefore with her property value, it is quite a valuable unit, and if there is a huge influx of folks who wanna take classes and the noise does start to infiltrate, that, that will diminish the value of her property. So, so I, you know, I have a couple of things to, to sort of propose and see how the board feels about that. One of them is to point out that the application that's before the board tonight is simply an application for a waiver from site plan review. And, you know, part of me thinks that this is complicated enough that a site plan review process might actually be beneficial. We've talked about many potential conditions on the property, we would wanna know very specifically what the installation is going to be and make sure that that's part of the site plan that gets approved, perhaps have a decibel level limit that's applied to the property, and all of these things are things that we're not really equipped to address this evening on this waiver application, but we can certainly address through a site plan process. I know the board is meeting again in May, so it doesn't have to be anything that would be particularly dragged out. And the site plan review ordinance does say that a waiver shall only be permitted when there is a minor or insignificant change in the nature of the use of the location. And, you know, I would argue that it is appropriate to go through a site plan review process when you've had something there that is a day spa and has no exercise component to it whatsoever, and the use is now transitioning into a space that is going to have an active exercise component to it. And, you know, to sort of demonstrate the seriousness of the concern, if you look at the map that they've provided, you know, they keep talking about, you know, six women at five thirty in the morning, or a few folks getting massage treatments, but the space that is directly under Ms. McMenus's bedroom is labeled as a thirty occupant fitness studio. And, and so, I mean, maybe this week there'll only be six ladies in there, but maybe next week there'll be thirty men and women in there. And, you know, the trend right now is to do personal training, and next week it might be to do CrossFit, and Zumba might have a wild resurgence, and you never know what type of class is gonna be the class of choice two or three years from now, and what the decibel level and the amount of traffic that's gonna be generated by that is. I mean, this plan permits thirty occupants in a fitness studio right underneath her bedroom. So if, if the board feels that a waiver is appropriate this evening, then we would ask that some quite thorough conditions be applied to that waiver that guarantee that the noise will not be heard in my client's unit, that the windows won't be open when there's any loud noise going on, that the vibrations won't be felt. But I, I actually think that the, the better course would be to deny the waiver and ask for a, a simple site plan review process, so that we could all consider what the appropriate decibel level might be, investigate how we feel about the hours, and see if there's any additional data that the board needs to consider deciding whether or not this change of use really warrants some additional and more specific conditions. The other thing that I would note is that bylaws can certainly be changed by a vote of a board of trustees, and so the fact that one resident is, or two or three residents who are right above are bearing the brunt of something could, you know, ten years from now, be something that a board of trustees and a condo association doesn't care about, and outvotes and changes the rules, and all of a sudden, the limitations that are in the bylaws right now about vibrations and noise could disappear or be lessened significantly, whereas conditions placed on the, on the property by the planning board are conditions that would continue to be binding and would continue to protect the property, even the minority members of the, of the condo board. So, again, none of this is meant to in any way suggest that the business has not made a responsible proposal, that anyone is in any way upset that this business is entering the neighborhood, we wish them nothing but the best. We just wanna ensure that everyone who lives in the condo building directly above these studios that are gonna potentially have significant numbers of people in them, are gonna continue to have the same quiet use and enjoyment of their property that they've had. Let me just, if you don't wanna, just let me look at my notes here for a second. So, that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Comments from the board?
I was gonna say, I mean, I, I feel comfortable that we can put enough conditions on it without more process. I think we're talking about noise and vibration, and your point's well taken, that, you know, the condo bylaws can change, but, you know, based on what they are now, we can certainly adopt those in our permit as a condition. And that way, we'd go on in perpetuity regardless of what the condo association does, and it looks like the, the language that's in the condo bylaw now seems reasonably thought out. I don't know about, you know, decibel levels are always difficult, I mean, we could go to the point to say, you know, no music will be audible from the residential unit, that's, you don't need a decibel level for that, you could just state it flat out.
Well, that was the reason for the question, Alice, I'll let you respond in a minute, but that was the question is, is, you know, how do you measure it, and the answer is if you hear it, then it's too loud. And I think that's, how many decibels that is, but I think it's.
Yeah, zero, you don't, well, emanating from the space, you know.
Yeah.
So I, so I think, you know, the noise you can address that way to protect the residential unit, and, you know, the vibration is already kind of baked into the condo bylaw, and if we just adopted that paragraph, it would be put into our decision as well. And I've heard some things about the soft closers on the doors, you know, maybe we say the windows won't be open between certain hours just as extra protection, maybe early in the morning and late at night or something, windows just can't be open.
I would presume there's central air conditioning in this space, so there's really no reason to open the windows.
And then I know, I know in the application, you know, there were certain representations made that we can certainly adopt, you know, certain things like, you know, only small groups, fewer than ten people before a certain time period. You know, we can basically adopt what they're representing to us, make that part of the decision, and.
True.
That's my opinion, I think we can condition it sufficiently that way.
I think the controlling element is the condo association.
Well, it is, and that could change in the future, but, but if we adopted, you know, their, the regulation they submitted, then it would be part of our decision, if that ever changed, then that could still come to us.
Still be part of the decision.
Yeah.
Alice, you wanna make point?
Yeah, I was, I mean, I highly doubt that that would ever change, because where we are in a mixed-use building, and it is, you know, a noisy area in the harbor, that we need to keep this provision in. And I don't think a board would ever vote it out, any responsible board, but if you do adopt it in this decision, then regardless, if, I can't even imagine who would remove it, someone did, this would still be in place. And I think that the exclusion of Zumba would satisfy, I know that the Murphys have spoken with me about they're right above too, that, you know, Zumba, Sally and I have been to them, isn't what we want. So if you can exclude it, although they've said they're never gonna do it, I think that would still satisfy the.
I'm not quite sure how we define that, I don't know that.
Well, I mean, there could be something that comes along that isn't called Zumba, that would have the same level of activity.
High, high impact.
Yeah, I think you gotta stay with the noise level.
It comes down to noise and vibration.
It does, it really does, yeah.
It just boils down to noise and vibration.
It really does, yeah.
If you're gonna use jackhammers in there, they can't affect the units.
Right, that's fine.
That's the new trend, jackhammer dancing.
A new term.
Something new every, every couple of months, you never know.
Okay, I think we get someone here.
I'm Rob Proctor, N thirty-one, noise and vibration is a very complicated issue. It's not just a matter of can you hear, can you feel it? It goes a lot further than that, I haven't heard, and unfortunately, I'm not privy to the, the plans that have been submitted to the planning board are about what type of insulation is gonna be used. I understand it's Anderson Insulation is making recommendations, I don't know if they have acquisitions on their boards or not, or within their company, if you're employing an acquisition privately or separately. But sound and vibration can be a very big problem, and it's very expensive to repair once it starts, and it's not gonna be constant, it could be intermittent, it could be fifteen people create a vibration, and if there's only four people that create a vibration, are we doing something that creates a resonant frequency, what type of insulation are we using to mitigate sound? Decibel levels is not a bad idea, a site review is not a bad idea. As a board, I think you best ought to accept the site review, I don't think it can hurt the process, I don't think it impedes anything. But I can tell you that, maybe the architect can tell me a little bit about what type of insulation they're using, you know, what, what, what octave bands it mitigates sound, how much it mitigates sound in those octave bands, and insulation does not mitigate vibration. So that's, you know, we can say we can put insulation in all day long, it doesn't stop vibration. You know, a site review isn't a bad deal, right now, I don't, I think you got a pretty good plan in place, I don't anticipate any, any problems, but I felt suspicious about this approach, this isn't necessarily out of the ordinary. I don't know, I don't know what your expertise is on the board about sound and vibration, but it's, it can be a, it can cause a lot of problems.
Definitely wanna address that.
The, like, I, I think it comes down to the, Mr. Monger's point, that the bylaw for the condominium will be incorporated into your decision, and it restricts sound and vibration to unreasonably interfere with other unit owners' use of their property. It's already in place, we have to abide by it, regardless of what you tell us today, the likelihood of that being changed is pretty much zero, so.
But the rules, were it to be adopted, the rules that you have tomorrow would be the same as you have today?
Yeah, absolutely, we don't have a choice.
Well, and if we adopt it in our decision, they don't have a choice, because it's permanent, we make it permanent, so.
And I think that's appropriate, that's completely appropriate to adopting your decision, and then it goes on in perpetuity.
There's obviously a big concern about sound and vibration, and we wouldn't be adding all this insulation, we wouldn't be doing sound tests. So asking for a little bit more information about the type of insulation used, how it, how it addresses the sound, and how it, and what this test involves, and how the test is done, and how the test is performed, and what testing standard are you using, and what testing, and what, what results you're trying to achieve.
I think all we're trying to achieve, the board, and is to make sure that these people can't hear it in their units, because right now, what existed in the spa, they're making better, and that they're taking up the ceilings, they're adding insulation, they, there's, there's a double ceiling in there, they've added layers, then they're adding more, they've changed the framing structure, they aren't using drop ceilings, they're using hollow ceilings, so that's every effort which was above and beyond that code requires. So then, after Linda expressed her concerns, they just said, we'll put the bows on, we'll go up and see, and if she can hear it, it's gotta be turned down. So I don't think it's a scientific decibel level or not, because if it were dead quiet and the wind wasn't blowing, and there were no boats and no garbage trucks, Linda could hear something that was set at five on that day, that she might not hear the other day. So I think if we define it as five, and Linda can hear it, then we haven't solved our problem.
And this, the sound test, I mean, the, our lawyers are our sounding lord, so to speak, like, if you're letting us know what disturbs me, what doesn't, you know, so that prior, the sound test, prior to even opening our business, so that it isn't an issue. And we don't want it to disturb anyone.
A few details about the test that we're gonna put forward.
But all we're gonna do is turn on a box of glow sticks and say, if they can hear it, there is no science to it, that's what our plan is now.
Yeah, I think we've got multiple things going on here.
Yes, and before we open, to make sure, like, yes, and to be honest, I doubt what we put on, will we do anything to the.
Let's, let's have everything come through the chair.
Yeah.
Right, if you wanna have a discussion, you can take that out in the hall. Let me, let me ask, is there anyone else from the, on the public that wants to say anything, or something to offer? I'll take that as a no.
May I just say one follow-up thing?
You may.
I, I think that the, the question that's being posed is whether this is gonna be a subjective standard or an objective standard. Basically, the condition that you've proposed to adopt this evening would be a condition that if any of the condo owners who live above the unit are disturbed, then they'll turn the noise down and stop the vibrations, and that, that is acceptable to us, if that's the condition that the board will adopt. But that, we must recognize that is subjective standard, if she can hear it and she's bothered by it, and they think that it's okay, that still means they have to turn it down. Whereas if you go through a site plan review process, there would be the possibility of adopting a more objective standard when we figure out what an appropriate fair decibel level is, or appropriate amount of vibration is, and actually be more precise about it. So, you know, but for the sake of precision, that, that's why I would propose an actual site plan review process, and I think that that's what you're driving at, is that there's some science here that could be considered. But to the extent that the board doesn't think that that's necessary, we're perfectly comfortable with the objective standard, as long as we're all, you know, understanding that it means that, you know, you basically have the canary in the coal mine, if she.
You're the judge.
Yeah, if she, if she can hear it, yeah.
I mean, I think that's as subjective as you can, if you hear it, then it's too loud.
Right, precisely, and, and that's, that's acceptable to us, that's acceptable to us.
That would make more sense to me to sit there and then to establish whether it's six decibels or fourteen decibels.
Right.
Yeah, I think the noise piece is very easy, it's if you can hear it from your unit, it's too loud, that's very easy, the vibration, you know, I think the standard in the condo bylaw seems reasonable, but maybe to define it even further, you could say if you feel a vibration that's, you know, in excess of levels you would have if that space were used for residential uses.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing, the other thing I wonder about, Dan, is setting some sort of a precedent or going down a, a road that's gonna, I mean, we, we're trying to make mixed use more widespread through the town, you know, that's considered a good type of development, and how much restriction do you wanna put on those commercial uses relative to the residential uses above?
Well, and part of it too is that, you know, everyone bought into their condominiums with the regime that's already in place. So presumably, when people bought their condos, they read the bylaws and. So presumably, when people bought their condos, they read the bylaws and they understood there were going to be commercial units in the building, and they were comfortable with the noise and vibration standards in the bylaw. So, so I mean, I think to Bob's point, I, I think we have to be careful not to go way beyond what people's expectations were when they bought into the, the building.
Oh, right. And, you know, set up a, a, a series of tests and science that's gotta be, you know, rigorously applied to every situation that comes along, uh, that seems to me very cumbersome.
Yeah, I mean, it says already, I know on the bylaw it says, if, you know, it's unreasonable noise or vibration, then you have, you know, through the condo association, now you could bring an action. If we made it part of our permit, then it's, they could get the permit revoked in theory as well as site.
Well, yeah, and the key is the word, when I'm looking at this, you know, it's saying disturbing noises. So that's the key word, is what, what is, you know, and what is disturbing to one person may not be disturbing to another person. But if we're saying that this is the condo unit above, and whatever they deem disturbing, and it's already in this particular bylaw.
I don't think you would say that. I think it's a, it, you know, it's legal language.
That's why I'm not a lawyer.
I, I don't think we'd put in our permit, you know, that if this specific individual found it disturbing.
No, 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 I didn't mean that. I, I just meant that, for me looking at this, that was the key word.
Yeah, that's the difference between a subjective and objective, you know, the other way to go would be to say, you know, they can't play music beyond, you know, eight decibels or whatever in their space.
Somebody might find eight decibels disturbing.
Yeah, exactly.
In which case, you're in worse, you're in worse condition than you would be otherwise.
Right, I, I completely agree. And so if, and if everyone is comfortable saying that if the, you know, unit owners are disturbed, if they find it to be an unacceptable level of noise, that they'll turn it down, then that's completely fine.
Well, no, I think we're talking about adopting the standard that's in the bylaw now.
Right, and that's not quite what was promised. What was promised was that it would be as if there was nothing going on downstairs. It would be every day, you know, same level of noise that has been experienced in the past, which is there's been no noise, there's been no vibration, it's just been a massage therapy studio downstairs. And so that's what the applicants have represented to my client, that she would have from their situation as well. And so I don't, I, I, I don't know how to enforce that other than to say if she's bothered by it, then they need to turn it down. And it seems like everyone's in agreement with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure we're that far apart. Do we have a trial motion?
I do have one question. What's a phonograph? Can someone explain that to me? Lighten the mood, lighten the mood of it.
Do, do you remember that horn-shaped thing with the dog sitting in front of it, his master's voice?
How old is this dog?
I don't know. I think it's a boilerplate door, it's in the basement, and we're with the dogs.
Laura, do we have a?
The conditions?
Let's see if we can try to, see what we get for effect here.
Well, and do we want to specifically tie it to this, or just?
Well, let's see what, what, what is, did you have?
It's a lot, it's sort of a smorgasbord here, so you may not want all of these, but, but you know.
Why not, why don't you do a reading before you move it, you know, so we can hear it?
Yeah.
Get input from the Apple Channel as well. I guess the conditions, the proposed conditions, see if there's any other ones we need to add.
Okay.
Well, I, I added everything that I heard, so there's something in there.
We should discuss that.
Well, these are the, I can just read the conditions, okay?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, or did you want me to just read what you wrote?
Maybe just a quick summary.
All right, well, since you wrote it, since that.
Why don't you read them?
Okay, no, I, I don't want to read them. I just wanted to sort of summarize what they were, and then maybe we can, we can kind of sort through them. So you always have a standard one about construction complying with the improvement shown in the plan. So that's, that's standard, that's included. The hours of operation, do you want to leave it at five-thirty on weekdays, um, eight to five Saturday, uh, Sunday, ten to four?
That's what the applicants request?
I do, I do. I don't see a problem with that.
Yeah.
Oh. Point of clarification, I think that Saturday is five-thirty-two.
I don't know.
No? Eight?
Eight, okay.
Oh, eight's okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Well, this is eight AM to five PM?
That's.
Saturday, okay.
Okay, then this was something also from their material, um, and the numbers may not be exactly right, so, um, please let me know. Prior to seven AM, exercise or yoga classes may be held with the number of participants not to exceed nine per class.
Ten, not to exceed ten.
Not to exceed ten, okay. I thought it was like less than.
I might've said fewer than ten, but not with, my, yeah.
Okay, and personal training or massage therapy may be provided to individual customers. Okay. And then I tried to summarize the condominium, um, um, regulation, which is something like, sound generated by the studio shall not exceed the level permitted by the condominium association for volume and vibration.
I think we're talking about adopting their specific language.
Yeah, I, I think that that would get us back into what if it changed. So I think you're, uh, and I don't think this would be setting an unreasonable precedent for other businesses coming to the area. As Mr. Vogel pointed out, you don't want to discourage that. I think that adopting the language with respect to, I think everything's applicable except maybe the exterior part, and I don't know if that makes sense, but certainly the first sentence is applicable.
I think we should have just adopted it in its entirety.
Yeah. You could do that, yeah.
No unit owner shall make or permit.
Those, those are the, that's the private law within, within the homeowner, within the association there.
It is.
You know, and there's always, there's always the, the risk that could happen if, uh, well, two things happen. One is that the way we've done it allocates the risk to the business as opposed to allocating the risk to the homeowner upstairs. And the other thing is what would happen if the homeowner upstairs started throwing wild parties and disturbing the guys downstairs? Yeah.
Maybe, maybe it would make sense to substitute the words, no unit owner, to, um, the applicant shall not make, permit, or suffer any disturbing noises, you know, and then again, the rest of it seems to make sense.
Yeah, I think, I think everything except for maybe the last sentence about smoking, I don't know that we care.
Yeah.
Um, but, but yeah, I mean, it says right, it says right in there. It says right in there, for purposes of this section, any noise or vibration from within a unit which can be heard or ascertained within another unit shall be deemed disturbing. So it's.
Correct.
That's better than a decibel level. If you can feel the vibration or you can hear it, it's not allowed. That's the best you're gonna do.
That's, that's fine with us.
It's not somebody else's, subjectivity is yours.
It's absolute. I mean, you walk in, you feel the vibration, it's in violation. So that's what, that's the regime you have now, so.
That's fine with us.
Yeah.
So just curious, do we write this into a condition, or we just refer to it?
Yeah, it'd be a, we'd write it in. We'd just copy it right out, yeah.
Repeat the language of the condo association.
Other than the last sentence, there's the last sentence about smoking that I don't know that we care about.
Is there a section, subsection, paragraph reference that is that piece?
It says two.
It was submitted with the application. Do you have it?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have that.
You sent it out.
It's, it's a, it's a place of business that, so they can't smoke there anyway.
If I may to. Yeah. I, I don't think it would make sense to, to refer to the condo section.
We want to copy the language.
Yeah, I think you should just.
Just write it in.
Put that verbiage in.
Copy it and we change unit owner to applicant.
We've got that, what's the next one?
Yeah, shall, yeah, the applicant, yeah. Shall not make.
Permit any suffering, disturbing noise or vibrations by means of a radio, phonograph, stereo, television, piano.
We can delete phonograph, no.
Well, it does say technology device, so.
You know, I think it's a really, it's a really strict standard already. I, I can't imagine anything stricter than that, so.
How about eight-track?
Okay, so. So, okay, then we've got, um, the sound insulation, which is just going back to the six, uh, six to eight inches, which was, you know.
That was what we were told by Anderson, they, yeah, whatever they recommend to give us the maximum ability to, uh, deaden the noise is what we're gonna go with.
Okay, then we've got the sound test, um, with one of the trustees and one of the unit owners and.
The management.
It's actually in the management company, right? And it might be two unit owners, right?
There's two unit owners that want their unit.
Whoever would like to participate is welcome to come. We will likely conduct the tests in the early morning hours when it's most prevalent that you would hear the noise. And then I think we should, we should likely have one during the day too.
I might, yeah, I'll be the planning board's rep.
You know, what it'll be like.
Okay, so the condominium, one of the trustees, the management company, and the unit.
Sometimes I'm going home at early.
And, uh, then there was, uh, um, mention of a soft close mechanism on the doors, that that would be added.
That's fine, that on the exterior doors, is that what we're talking about?
Want us to fix your door too?
Okay, then. But, uh, just a kind of general encouragement that, um, the applicant shall encourage customers to park at a distance from the building.
Sure.
You might as well throw it in there.
You can't enforce that personally.
No, I know, but, um, then there was, um, some discussion about not allowing Zumba or similar high-energy dancer exercise classes?
I, I, I don't think that's important, because if they follow the other rules, they can do whatever they want in there.
It's hard to define too, I think. And like, they said, it comes down to noise and vibration, so.
I mean, they, they can have bagpipe classes in there for all we care, as long as the folks upstairs don't ever hear it.
Windows shall remain closed while music is being played in the, um.
Fair enough.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that okay?
I'm not, I mean, I'm not exactly comfortable with that is, the early morning hours.
Yeah, could we limit that to say the morning hours and the evening hours?
Non-business hours?
Yeah, like before eight, maybe after five?
I, I was thinking like, you know, just as a precaution, like in the early morning hours, uh, yeah, I don't know what.
So outside of business hours, the, the windows would remain closed?
Yeah.
No, no, I was saying like before a certain hour, like before eight AM or something, you can't have the windows open if music is playing.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, nine to five, normal business hours.
And then at night, you know, after, I don't know, at six o'clock or something.
Yeah, I think it would make sense, probably six-ish, people would.
Yeah, like, you can't, you can't, you can't have music playing with the windows open before eight o'clock or after six o'clock. Now, now that said, the other standard's still in place.
You've still got the objective standard of, if you can hear it, it's too loud.
But, but we don't want to make you have to go to, you know, litigation to try to stop it. So if you make sure the windows are shut, that's gonna help you just in case, so. Just like the sound insulation, you know, just in case. And that's okay, that works, the.
Yeah, it'd just be nice during the day.
Yeah, you're gonna want to open the windows.
Yeah.
Yeah. And no one's gonna care during the day, and your music has gotta be soft anyway, so.
You couldn't hold a candle to Jerry's music store, so.
Yeah.
Really, absolutely right.
Wait till Harriet's day.
Yeah, wait till Harriet's days comes along next year.
Jerry's never there before eleven in the morning, though.
Yeah, I just raised one other issue, unrelated to noise and vibration. Um, I, I don't think this is an issue, but I haven't heard specifically from the applicant about the installation of pipes and, uh, thanks for the new steam rooms they're going in. I, I understand that there was some shower steam facility before, so I don't think that's such a big change, but we also just want to ensure that there'll be no incursion of steam or heat coming from the downstairs unit through the addition of the new facilities. So I, I don't know if the board would indulge us in hearing about that.
Well, why don't we just add that in? That's, I don't thi, I think that'd be a violation of the condo docs, sure. So why don't we just add that, there'll be no incursion of steam or heat?
Well, we're not changing anything.
No.
What's ever's there is existing, so we don't want, we want to be able to utilize what's there. So I don't want to make sure that any condition prohibits us from utilizing what's ever there.
No, it'd just be, it'd be a similar condition to like the noise and vibration, like, no steam or heat can be detected in the residential units of, similar to the noise and vibration condition.
I see, I see.
That would be terrific, thank you.
Yeah.
I didn't understand what, what he meant.
So I think we got the conditions.
The no steam or heat from the unit can, will be able to be detected or incurred, incursions into the units above. All right, you want to try this?
Why can't you just move it with all the conditions that we just?
Yeah, that's true, you could just move it.
You can move, because we talked about all the conditions.
There is no finding.
Oh, that's right, because it's a waiver.
So then why don't you move it with all the conditions that we just talked about?
Anything, anything else?
Well, I kinda, no, no, I just thought it would be better, because we've been talking about a lot of things here. Just to have it be set, doesn't that seem reasonable?
I would ask that it be read, because I'm sort of lost in exactly some of the things.
Okay.
Why don't you read it through once, and then if it sounds good, I'll move it. And then you can second it. You don't move it yet, just read it.
Okay, um, so, let me see.
Just read the conditions.
Okay. So, uh, the conditions, number one, construction shall comply with the improvements shown on plans entitled, alterations to condo unit N eleven-three, Millworf Plaza, Situate, Massachusetts, for healing touch therapies, sheets D slash, D dash one demolition plan, A dash one partition plan door schedule and partition types, A dash two reflected ceiling plan, and A dash three enlarged bathroom plans and interior elevations dated February twenty-seventh, twenty thirteen, as prepared by Compass Group Architecture LLC, except as may be modified to meet these conditions. Number two, hours of operation are limited to Monday through Fri, Friday, five AM to eight-thirty.
Five-thirty.
Oh, I'm sorry, what? Five-thirty AM, I'm sorry, to eight-thirty PM. Saturday, eight AM to five PM, and Sunday, ten AM to four PM. Prior to seven AM, exercise or yoga classes may be held with a number of participants not to exceed ten per class. And personal training or massage therapy may be provided to individual customers. This should minimize exterior noise and interior noise transmissions. Number three, music provided in the personal training area should be by a small tabletop external device such as a tabletop Bose ray.
I think that, I think we just say anywhere. I mean, I don't think it's just the personal training area, right? Is that anywhere in the space?
Yeah.
Yeah.
By way of clarifications, before we move on, on number two, it's ten people per class prior to seven AM, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I didn't, I missed that, I was jotting down.
Yeah, prior to seven AM.
Thank you.
Exercise or yoga classes may be held with a number of participants not to exceed ten per class. And personal training or massage therapy may be provided to individual customers. So, so, uh, music provided shall be by a small tabletop external device such as a tabletop Bose wave radio. Music in individual massage rooms will be limited to a hand, handheld device? Do you want to say the individual rooms?
Music in individual massage rooms? I, I don't think that really matters, does it? It's just, we're just saying. We're just basically saying no built-in sound system, right?
Right, the tabletop unit would be fine.
Tabletop, tabletop or.
Well, we already said, we actually said, I think the reason she wrote this is because, you know, she called out the personal training area. So in this case, music provided, anywhere. They'll be by a small tabletop external device such as a tabletop Bose wave radio.
Or, or you could say the, whatever, the iPod language was there?
No, I, why? Such as a Bose ray radio or other technology? Similar technology, similar technology?
Except phonographs.
Yeah.
Or bagpipes.
Okay. No music system built into or attached to the walls or ceilings is permitted. And then we X that out, right? Okay. Um, sound insulation will be installed in the, so number four, I'm sorry. Sound install, insulation will be installed in new walls and ceilings. Sound barrier insulation in the ceiling shall be between six and eight inches thick and be designed for sound reduction rather than thermal retention. Final sound insulation specification shall be provided to the planning board and the building commissioner prior to the installation for verification of conformance with the intent of this condition. Number five, the applicant has agreed to conduct a sound test prior to opening with the condominium trustees, the management, and several, or is that two?
Management company.
Oh, management company, I'm sorry. And is it two of the unit owners? Or several, or, and, and the unit owners. This test will be designed to fully understand the level of the noise within the premises and provide an opportunity to determine an acceptable level of volume in the unit. The town planner and the building commissioner shall be notified of the results and of the test and any agreements that are made based on this test. Further noise compliance shall be based upon this test. And here's, do you want to insert that language?
Yeah, and then we get, we know what it is. So we'll insert the language from.
So, then, I guess.
Well, Mr. Chairman, before we move to the next term, do you want to say noise and vibration on the previous one?
Well, what I was gonna do is, oh, yeah, okay. So this test will be designed to fully understand the level of noise and vibration within the premise, premises, and provide an opportunity to determine acceptable level of vol, volume and vibration within the unit. The town planner and building commissioner shall be notified of the results of the test and any agreements that are made based on this test. Further noise or vibration compliance shall be based upon this test. Then we could also say, do you want to say like a whole nother condition, number six?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I don't understand the last sentence of what you just read. Further compliance will be based on the test. Does that mean that whatever they do that day is then okay forever, or?
Yeah, you know what, we can't really have that in there, so, because it's, yeah, we'd have to take out that last sentence.
Okay, so then, number six would just be this?
Yeah.
Okay, so then number six would just be this, is that you think?
Yeah, that minus the last sentence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So number six will be no u, no app, wait.
The applicant.
The applicant shall make...
Shall not.
Yeah, the applicant shall not make, permit, or suffer any disturbing noises or vibrations by means of a radio, phonograph, stereo, television, piano, or other musical instrument or other device or form of technology of any description by themselves or their family, guests, agents, or servants, or customers, nor do permit or suffer anything by such persons that will unreasonably interfere with the rights, comforts, or convenience of other unit owners or occupants. No radio, phonograph, stereo, television, or other device shall incorporate the outside terrace or deck speakers. For purposes of this section, any noise or vibration from within a unit which can be heard or are ascertained within another unit shall be deemed as disturbing noise or vibration. Also, okay, so that was number six, number seven. Soft-close mechanisms shall be added to the exterior doors used by the studio. Number eight, the applicant shall encourage customers to park at a reasonable distance from the building. And number nine, windows shall remain closed while the, oh, windows shall remain closed while the music is playing if before eight AM or after six PM. And last one, so that was nine, number ten, no incursion of steam or heat can be detected in the unit above. I think that's it.
No, we'll add one more. Eleven, signage will be approved, signage is approved, estimated.
Signage will meet all the...
Signage is approved right here.
Signage will be, is approved, estimated.
Okay, sign.
Is that the reduced, yes, one that we asked for, okay.
Look right, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. All right, I think we're good, and then I guess, may as well read the findings and move it, right? If we're good?
We didn't have any findings?
No, you find it just... Grant the waiver with the following condition.
All right, I, I move...
Mr. Taylor? It was pointed out to me that we may have mentioned healing touch therapies in number one. Did we do that, or is it Be Well Studios?
Actually, it does say Be Well Studios.
Okay, thank you.
I, well, I didn't read that, 'cause I wasn't moving it yet, I was just reading, I mean, I can read this first part.
Oh, you know what, when you, but that's okay, the title of the plan is the title of the plan, I'm sorry. The plan mentioned ceiling touch, but that has to be in that way.
Yeah, it's in here, but that's the name that they put on the plan, it's their plan, that's the name they put on it, so we can't really change the name to what the name of their business really is.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So, so I move we grant the site plan waiver with the conditions just read.
Do we have a second? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Go make money.
Thanks for all your input.
Go be well.
Be well and be successful.
And come back next week with the cupcake.
You're gonna be prime business guy, so I'll send you that.
I'm down a donkey with the donuts. Do we have anything before Bob?
Well, first, if I give this back to you, can you make sense of all this?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to.
We'll talk about that in a second.
Okay, I wanna look at it later, okay, before you leave. So as soon as you're ready to give it to me, I'll just look at it.
Do we have anything else before we adjourn?
No.
Most of you adjourned?
Most of you adjourned, so...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Table, lady.
We're adjourned.
Yep, that's it.
Are we, we're adjourned? Okay, thank you.